Welcome to our Brevard County Workshop. This is July 13, 2017. We're going to do something different today. I was just mentioning to Commissioner Pritchett that we're conducting county business and I just think it would be appropriate if we asked for the Lord's blessing. And she said she'd be more than willing to do that for us. So would you please stand?
If we bow your heads. Father, we just thank you for this afternoon and we thank you that you care more about us than we do. And Lord, we ask right now that you would give us wisdom today as we make decisions for your people and that we would make the best decisions. We ask for your presence here and we ask you that we would come together in agreement and wisdom in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, so our purpose today is to learn a little bit more about health insurance. And so we have some really knowledgeable folks here that are going to impart their wisdom to us. And so I'll turn this over to Mr. Visco.
Commissioner, actually, the county manager, the Bureau of County Managers decided to take the lead on this.
Oh, all righty.
A fair amount of our assistance. So we were here to give it's.
I stand corrected.
And I'd let me begin by thanking Mr. Visco and Jan from Robinson-Bush along with First and Jennifer who did tremendous job in putting all this information together, especially since we've gone over it repeatedly modified and tried to put it in a kind of manner that would be hopefully most useful to the board as we move forward. And so I'm going to try to go through this not too rapidly because there's a lot of information, but rapidly enough so we don't unduly waste any of the board's time. And you know, I've had the privilege of being involved with the health insurance program since 1989. And we've had a tremendous amount of growth and changes in that program over time. And so I'm going to begin, if you would, by looking on page two of the, of our PowerPoint where we talk about the participating employer groups. Florida statute 11208 provides the statutory authority for the board to maintain a self-insured group health insurance program with a risk pool which includes the charter officers, constitutional officers, and can include other public agencies. And you'll note that we have had a variety of agencies involved. We've actually had the clerk of courts has been with us since '78, but they left for a period of time and then came back into the program. And we also had Port Canaveral, as you see, that left the program. They were with us for many years from one of the earliest participants, but they left in 2010. When they left, it was because they wanted to have enhanced benefits beyond where we could be because we made significant changes in 2010, which I'll talk to you about as we move along. If you look at the demographics on page three, you'll note that we cover approximately 8,500 lives. That is one of the largest employer groups. So we've had the opportunity to rather significantly influence health insurance within Brevard County over time. And we'll be talking a little bit more of that as we go along. What you'll note there is, and should note with all the participating providers, is that, you know, we have been a family-friendly plan over time. We average, if you look at it, if you, you'd have to modify a couple of the numbers up there with our retirees and take that into effect. But basically, on average, we have 2.1 participants for every enrolled member, which means that in addition to the member, the average person has one or a little over one either spouse or children on the plan, which is above the average that you would see, which kind of indicates that we are friendly and have been a family-friendly plan. What you'll notice on the next page is that we currently have a variety of different options out there. We have EPO plans, which are narrower, lower-cost networks that provide people a lower-cost plan with limited access to who they can go to. And so that affords some individuals the opportunity to have lower costs than they otherwise would be available. We have a high deductible plan, which is called an HRA, and we'll go into more detail later. I just want to give you a general overview. And a traditional PPO-type plan. You'll also notice that we have chosen, the board has, for a long period of time to maintain a competitive model. That's where you don't have all your eggs in one basket. Things that have typically happened in insurance-type programs is when a vendor has a corner on the market, then they can obviously leverage things the way they want to. And sometimes it's to the employer's disadvantage. And so by maintaining a competitive model, we have more than one plan always available so that doesn't happen. And quite honestly, we have lived through that experience on more than one occasion where the market gets cornered, there's a monopoly going on, and all of a sudden we have less providers than meets, has met the board's interest. And I'll mention that a little bit more over time. While when, in the early 1990s, we had everyone that I previously showed you participating, we did get to a point in time in discussions where how we funded the program became something of an issue. And you may recall, we heard a little bit of that discussion during some of the workshops. Well, we entered into interlocal agreements with all the participating charter officers and agencies to make very clear who had authority to do what. These interlocal agreements included what our obligations and each entity's obligations were, how we would fund the program, what were the terms and conditions for each of these agencies and charter officers to participate, and what, how obligations in the plan, financial obligations for retirees, et cetera, would be handled. That's all included in those agreements. As you see on the next page, all final decision-making authority in those plans with respect to the program remain with the Board of County Commissioners. And so we do have an Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee that participates in the screening and selection of vendor selections. And they also have participated in reviewing the benefit design, the premium structure, and how to make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. People who participate in that currently are representative from Human Resources who serves as the chairperson. Each of you as commissioners appoint an individual, any one of your choosing. And each participating employer has a representative that they select and an alternate as well. We also have someone from the county managers' office, the budget office, the employee advisory committee, the firefighter union, and retirees serve on that committee. We would like to recommend to the board that, you know, we had some discussion, we tried to listen to what occurred during our workshops. And one of the things that came up was, you know, it would be nicer perhaps to have some more private sector representation. Of course, board members have the ability to select anyone they want on that committee, but, and you could choose to do that moving forward or change your representatives. But what we wanted to suggest to the board is that we'd like to recommend that we add a representative from the Citizens Budget Review Committee. Most of them, if not all of them, have private sector experience. We actually, when we met with the committee recently, told them that we were planning to recommend that to the board so that they actually took a vote and, and assigned a potential individual who would participate as that committee representative and a, an alternate. And that would have been Doug Baker as the member and Peter Fuskes as the alternate. So that is one area that if the board would be good with that, we would like to perhaps have the board make a motion sometime, if you so desire, to add that representative from the Citizens Budget Review Committee, those representatives onto the Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee. I guess we could wait to the end of the meeting if you want to discuss that, if that meets the board's intent.
Let me just interject here. What I'm thinking now is, you had mentioned this before and I've given it some thought, but I wanted to reach out to my fellow commissioners and ask them if they, if they've thought about this at all, or if it's something you want to contemplate and come back to later or even another day.
Let's go through the, let's go through the whole thing first. Okay. Put that as an action item. We'll do it then.
Let me talk a little bit about the plan evolution and I'll give a very simple overview. Back in 1989, we were an indemnity self-insured plan. And later on in the presentation, you'll see more of the specifics. We then moved from there. In the early 1990s, HMO became very prevalent and we went to a fully insured HMO. We learned a variety of very valuable lessons there. Basically, our business got bought, they wanted to get out, there were market influences in terms of commercial market and Medicare that came in. And Humana, who was the provider in those early years, actually wanted, you know, offered us, I believe, if I remember correctly, and I'm pretty sure I do, $3 million to end the plan early because they were losing money back then. So we've, we've had HMO experiences, we had PPO experiences. And then in 1999, we ended up in a partnership that lasted for six or seven years with the school board. And that was very, it was very helpful to the board because we were able to meet a variety of issues that were problematic. And I'll discuss that a little bit more in the plan evolution as I talk about that history. Finally, in the most recent years, we went to a high deductible consumer-driven plan, an HRA program, which I'll talk about what that is, and a PPO plan. The next page actually gives you more of the specifics of that plan evolution. And what I'd highlight for you is that in those early years, in 1989 to '94, we had a deductible plan that an individual would pay as a deductible before they received benefits, $150. And for family, it was $350. And an out-of-pocket maximum for an individual was $800 and was to 24. Over time, that has changed significantly, cost shifting. It had to do, it was the only way that the plan could continue to be fiduciarily in a position that responsible with available resources that we can continue the program. In 2017, those deductibles for the HRA became $1,500 for an individual from that $150 and it changed over time to $3,000 for a family instead of $350 for the family. Now, there are some HRA dollars that are given, especially more dollars to the lower-paid employees, and I'll talk about that a little later. On the PPO side, though, it changed from $150 and eventually became $600 as the deductible and $1,200 for the, for the family. And that's just for your deductible. Maximum out-of-pocket payments changed from an individual in 1989 to $800 to $3,000 for the individual in our HRA and $2,000 under the PPO. For a family, it used to be $2,400 and it eventually became, in the current year, under our HRA, $6,000. That's the out-of-pocket that an individual, a family would be responsible for. Or for a PPO, it could be $4,000. And, and I provided, we have provided for you what the history of those benefits were over time. What I'd like to point out is that in 2000, we joined with the school board in the Brevard Partnership Plan. At that time, for those of you who, who would think back and were here in Brevard County at that time, there were some significant challenges in the health insurance market. There were antitrust lawsuits ongoing between hospital systems. And basically, it was very difficult, if not actually it was impossible, for a plan to have all the hospital systems in one plan. Wasn't available just because of how the market was. And that was something that at that time was not acceptable to the Board of County Commissioners. They gave us some very specific direction that they wanted a plan available that had access to all the hospitals in the market, and they asked us to do what we could to do that. So we actually, with the help of our consultants, went and individually went into the marketplace and negotiated that. We got together with the school board and between their lives and our lives, we were by far the biggest employer. And we were able to achieve what no other employer did, which was have that single plan in place where all the hospitals were participating in the same network. We had, at that time, also negotiated with the Brevard Professional Network for physicians. And we got that group in as well, so any physician who wanted to participate, participated in that. And we did that for a number of years through 2006. During that period, I think we were a significant factor in changing the market. The major players were able to get similar types of arrangements and all of a sudden you could have a, you know, big vendor such as Aetna or some of the others that were a Cigna that could have all the hospital systems in the network. When that happened, we always looked at what we could do in our plan compared to what these other major players could do. And eventually, the Brevard Partnership Plan that I've just described to you did not become the most cost-effective alternative. So we in fact ended up going and changing, as you see there, to other providers. The first of those were Blue Cross Blue Shield and their HMOs. And eventually, Cigna and Health First became the providers that we have, which we currently have. Now, when that happened, we were, once again, we have what we currently have in place, which was a competitive market, competitive plan, meaning we've maintained at least two providers at all times to give people the option, one or the other. Some of them have narrower networks, but it provides us the opportunity that if a provider decides to do something that doesn't meet our needs, at least people would have the option to look at another plan by another provider. And we've continued that. We also, during the period, if we look at slide number on page 12, during the period of 2000, 2006, we had a variety of initiatives that we had to put in place because of the rising costs that were occurring and future obligations, unfunded obligations at that time, especially as it related to retirees. So based on those concerns and something called Gatsby 45, which dealt with post-employment benefits and you having to report that on your financial statements, you did not have to fund it, but you had to report it. That underfunded liability, as you're going to see, was a very significant concern. So during that period, we ended up taking some action in 2006 to try to reduce that unfunded future liability. And what we did basically was say if a retiree from that point forward, based on your years of service, whatever subsidy was available would be accredited based on a, the number of years of service you had. So if the board decided to subsidize $1,000 a year, you would get for every year of service, 4% of that money. Basically, if you had 25 years of service, then you'd receive that $1,000. If you only had 12 and a half years of service, then you would receive 50% of that. And that's one of the things that we did in that timeframe. We also, between 2006 and 2010, did a variety of other initiatives. One of them was in health and wellness, which we have done differently than some other organizations. We, we have focused on high-touch, high-visibility items that are the cornerstone of how we approach wellness in the workplace, meaning we send people out onto the work sites to do the biometric screenings, et cetera, rather than just by communication and emails or things of that nature. We have health fairs, we have those kind of programs. And I believe it's worked fairly successful for us. There's always the issue of what's the return on investment for what you put into those kind of programs. So we are rather observant, but unless we really see the hard dollar savings, we've been shy on putting into place certain initiatives that require some significant resources in terms of, you know, health clinics off-site, et cetera, and allowing people to go there, which many employers are very happy with and do, do, do have. That's not the path we've taken thus far, although we continually look at that. Another thing that we did during that 2006, 2010 timeframe was, you know, the board has always tried to be rather good to retirees over this whole period of time. And the retiree premiums were significantly different earlier in the early 1990s and early 2000s. They were lower than you would see in many other employers. So initiative that was taken into place was to slowly over time raise those premiums by one and a half times whatever the medical trend was. And that was a way that we would slowly or incrementally over time reduce the subsidy that was necessary for the board to have and, and report on your Gatsby 45 liability. We also did a variety of plan design changes and co-pay changes that were changed over time. And I'm going to go over those a little bit. I've talked about that very briefly earlier, but I'll give you a little bit more of that history in a few minutes. These incremental retiree premiums were secondary impact to our reducing this Gatsby 45 liability. And we have always tried to be, you know, good stewards of the resources that we have. And I would tell you, I think the Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee has done nothing less than a stellar job in that arena. They have many a time over the years recommended changes to the plan that were actually, in some instances, the board chose not to go that far. And so, you know, I think we've had a little bit of discussion about, you know, are the members of that committee really looking out for their own interests? Well, they are, only in the sense of wanting to make sure that we maintain a fiscally viable program. But as you're going to see, as we continue to talk, they've made very significant changes to shift costs to employees and dependents participating in that program, in our program, so that we can continue this as a viable program in light of the limited resources that, you know, as an organization, we have to fund all the important and critical needs that the organization has. So let me go back to what we, what other changes that were recommended and adopted. In 2006 to 2010, we initiated a working spouse premium surcharge. That is, if you have a spouse that is working and eligible for health insurance in another plan, we said if you're going to keep that person on our plan because it's cheaper for you, then there's a surcharge of $100 a month. That's $1,200 a year for you to do that. Because we wanted to discourage, obviously, people. And you're going to see one reason why is spouses are one and a half times the cost of employees and significantly more than children are as dependents. And so that surcharge came into effect during that timeframe and continues to this day. So people who have a spouse on the plan, who could be working in another plan, pay that extra $1,200 a year. And we have 177 spouses in that. In 2010, when we had a very major shift, and we all know that 2010 was part of the timeframe where we were still, you know, in, in the midst of that, the Great Recession there, we changed to a high deductible consumer-driven plan, which provided for very high deductibles, the $1,500. And it was based on salary tiers, what kind of reimbursement that you would have as part of that deductible. And I'm going to share that information specifically with you just in a couple of slides from now. We also had stop-loss insurance that we've always provided for the plan. Stop-loss insurance is a type of insurance that provides coverage for certain financial thresholds that limits the plan's liability, either on the aggregate, which we've never had that insurance, or for specific, for an individual, meaning that once an individual had a certain amount of claims, anything beyond that would be covered by this stop-loss insurance. And it's really to cover catastrophic claims. And we have, we had, up to 2010, we had significant reinsurance from catastrophic claim, excuse me, dollars that we recovered from the carriers, meaning the dollars we invested in those premiums, they paid out way more than what we paid them. So in 2010, staff had a, we looked at it and made the recommendation with the advice and from our consultants to eliminate that coverage. Why? Because they were going to have to make the money up and anyone else who came into the program knew what our prior losses had been. So you know, we had a limited liability of $1 million for an individual. And we decided, you know, if we, you know, as much as they're charging us, there's no way we believe that the future cost for catastrophic claims will exceed that. So we had for a period of years, no stop-loss coverage beginning in 2010. You'll see on the next slide what happened when we did that. So we had, 2010 to 2013, we had estimated fixed premiums that we would have paid and what the aggregating deductible would have been. And you would have seen that, what this slide tells you is that we actually made money those years, meaning that had we paid those premiums, we saved the plan because we know what our experience ended up being. We saved the plan, the money that you see in the right-hand column, up to when we got to 2013. In 2013, everything had stabilized for us and we in fact, had we paid the premium in that year, we would have received $297,000 back. At that time, we were dealing with the Affordable Care Act. And another important thing happened, which is you no longer could have a million-dollar cap on the individual. It became unlimited. Well, now, when it becomes unlimited, of course, your liability is without end on that. And so we started after that. You can see during that four-year period, we netted the plan, a total savings of $504,000. And that basically, and we continue with this stop-loss coverage to this day. In order to remain fiduciarily responsible, you know, we were in a self-insured program. And in 2014, we put out, for 2015 and '16, we asked carriers, hey, what about fully insured options? Where we eliminate the county having any risk? In a fully insured program, a couple of things happened. One, the data is no longer yours, meaning we have the ability to look at all our history and all our data to know exactly what's happening within the plan. In a fully insured plan, you pay a specific premium to the vendor and whatever your claims costs are, they're covered by that premium. So at the end of the day, if they make money, they make money. And if they lose money, well then the next year, you can expect that your rates are going to go up because they're not going to lose it for multiple years. No one stays in business doing that. So what we did in, in 2014 is say, you know what? We know where we are in our self-insured plan. Let's look at fully insured plan options. And I will tell you, we came off in those two years, as you're going to see in another couple of slides, a couple of really horrendous years. We lost four and five million dollars for the two, you know, two years. That's a lot of money. And we've more than made that up. But during that period, we wanted to make sure we were doing the right thing, so we went out with fully insured options. And based on the experience that our plan had for that prior year, the numbers that you see on this page are the numbers for the next two-year period that our provider said, if you go fully insured, this is what you're going to pay. We, on the third column, anticipated that we'd be paying $62 million in 2015 and $66 million in 2016. The plans came in and Cigna told us, well, if you come to us and we get your whole business, it'll be $71 million a year. That didn't look like that great a deal to us based on what we thought. And Health First came in and said, well, we can do it for 61, but of course, it's a significantly narrower network. They don't have certain hospitals in the system and other providers. But that was the option. So they were almost $11 million lower in their fully insured plan option than what Cigna was. And we were assuming that our costs were going to be $129 million for that two-year period. But I'll tell you what happened when we did this. When we went out there, they came in and they gave us some aggressive plan designs and cost- cost containment provisions that they said they were going to put into place that would be beneficial, that they thought would lower the plan costs. And they shared all those with us, in terms of tier deductibles, in terms of what they would do with the pharmacy program and co-insurance, and putting, in terms of HRA dollars, making people pay a certain amount before they started accessing the HRA dollars, either 250 for an individual or 500. The first dollars have to come out of pocket even before the HRA dollars were eligible to be used in the plan. And so we took every one of those options that were provided, and the Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee modified the plan that we had in place to adopt all those recommendations. And I believe Commissioner Barfield was, if I remember correctly when we did that, was involved in that and asked us to be innovative in some of the things that we did. And we adopted those strategies in 2015 and 16 and put them in place. And you can see in the last columns, those two years, we ended up, because of those things that were adopted by the board, consistent in what we just described here, the plan costs ended up being $48 million and $51 million for $99 million instead of what we initially anticipated, $129 million if we remained self-insured. But even more so than that, had we gone to fully insured, it didn't matter what our plan costs would have been, we would have paid either $142 million or $131 million over that, over that two-year period. And so that's part of what I think our story has been, because you're going to see, as we get further along, what's happened to our reserves over time. And I want to get to that. So what you'll see on Slide 17 is, in 2010, when we had a $10 million shift, because at that point, money was extraordinarily tight. We were, you know, it was during the time when we were cutting positions, we didn't have resources. And so we did a $10 million shift from the employer costs to employees assuming it. One of the things that we did was we changed pharmacy co-payments in what we did, and that had an actual impact that year of $6 million in terms of reduced pharmacy costs to the plan. We also went through, and prior to that, a couple of other things. We, and in 2011 to 2015, let me just go back for a second, we renewed our RFP partnership with the school board, and we went out together. And we received bids from a variety of providers, and at that time, the school board chose a different path than what the county followed. The school board's path, they felt having a single integrated provider was in their best interest. So they put all their benefits into a single provider, and that's the one they have still to this day, which is Cigna. We continued a competitive model with Health First and Cigna and offered the plans that I described to you earlier. And that is where we have been. For us, we did make a change in 2014, where we went to a single pharmacy benefit manager. We did that through an RFP process in 2014, and we ended up going to Cigna, who continues to be our provider today. And you will see that, and I had mentioned to you just was on the prior slide, in 2015, we went out and looked at the fully insured models. We also did one other thing, which was in 2016, asked for innovative solutions. And one of the solutions that we suggested to plans to show a true return of an investment and a true partnership where there's a shared risk, we said, you know what? You tell us who can be in your network, and we'll give you a narrow network. And we will look at everyone who enters that network, and we'll agree to pay you the same amount of money that it cost us for that group of people for the last year. And we'll give you medical inflation on top of that. And at the end, when we calculate that number, if you bring it in costs lower, like you tell us you're going to do, we'll give you half of that money, and the plan will save half of that money. But if, in fact, you know, your costs are higher, then those costs are on you. Unfortunately, when we put that model out, we didn't get any takers on that particular example. But we did continue to adopt strategies that have enabled us to build the plan's resources to the degree where we are now. So I mentioned, and let me also tell you the last couple of things that I think are important. We talked about the, we reinstated the, in 2014, the stop-loss insurance. We did get, as part of that change, we put onboard an onsite health educator through Cigna. And by the way, it wasn't an additional cost because we waited until the end of the negotiation, which we have successfully done on many occasions, and knew what the final administrative cost was, and then told them we would take that as long as you fully fund at no additional cost an additional full-time person. And so it wasn't that we're actually paying for it, because it was the agreed-upon administrative charge that they put in the RFP after we already had gotten a discount. During that time, in 2015, as you're going to see, when we had those really tough numbers in 2013 and 14, where we lost that money, we raised the active employee rates and retiree premiums by 30%. And that was a rather significant increase at that time. We also increased the PPO deductible to the numbers that I shared with you, 600 for an individual, 1,200 for the family. And we ended up moving our retirees, over 65 retirees, into fully insured products so that the board eliminated the unfunded liability and subsidy that was previously being provided. And that was very necessary because of the numbers that we, I'm going to show you in two more slides, of what happened, what has happened to the plan over time. Having said that, let me just go to the next slide, which was in plan year 2015. I mentioned, you know, when we did that fully insured model, one of the things they suggested is that we have a $250 and $500 deductible on the front end of what was the HRA, meaning the, that particular plan. We put that in place. We put the 10% co-insurance on brand drugs, and specialty copays went to $150. They are extraordinarily expensive specialty drugs. And we had $100 deductible on the brand drugs. That, we were projecting to have a savings based on what we were told by Health First and Cigna back in that 2015, what they thought we would save. We anticipated that to be $4.3 million. In fact, for those benefits, when we had the analysis done and we looked at it, it actually saved us $5.175 million. And that was a cost shift to employees when that occurred. The next slide gives you a history of what happened from 1999. And remember, that's the year we went into Bervard Partnership Plan with the school board. We were self-insured. We had all the hospitals joining the network to the present day. And what you'll see there is that in 1999, we had $1 million in reserve. And that was, it was necessary as a self-insured plan to try to build that number up because the state required significantly more dollars than that. And we were able to do that. And over the course of the next nine to 10 years, we raised that incrementally, over time. You don't have the addition of those numbers there, but I have the benefit of that here. And I will tell you that up to 2009, we were able to raise that to $13.9 million. Then in 2010, you'll see, we lost $602,000. And let me tell you that these numbers, this is a cash basis analysis. We've maintained this ever since 1999, cash in, cash out, on a monthly basis. There are different ways to report health insurance. One of the important ways is an incurred basis, i.e., you know you incurred the cost, but you haven't paid it yet. Sometimes it takes two or three months for a vendor to verify that it's a legitimate cost, to make sure that it's paid consistent with the terms of their contract arrangements with the provider and any discounts. So that's the incurred basis. This is just dealing cash in, cash out, on a monthly basis. And we were up to, 2010 is the first year we had that significant hit, and we were losing $602,000. You'll remember what I told you, that's also the year where our revenues in the county had dropped dramatically, and we were having a tough time, so we had to cut expenses here and there. And that's the year that we made the changes I previously discussed, a lot of them, that shifted $10 million of costs to the employees. So we went from a year where we were collecting $52 million, in 2009, we dropped it to $46 million in 2010. We continued to build those reserves through 2014, well, actually, excuse me, to 2012. If you did the math on the bottom of this one, what you would see in 2012, we had a good year, 4.2 million more revenue than we did expenses. At that time, we had $21.3 million, excuse me, in the balance forward. And then 2013 occurred, and we had some significant catastrophic claims, and we lost $4.8 million, meaning we had $4.8 million more expenses than we had revenue. And to be worse than that, in 2014, we had an additional $5.6 million that was more expenses than reserves. At that point in 2014, that's only three short years ago, we had, we went from $21.3 million to $10.8 million. And I can vividly remember having days with Mr. Visco saying, with those numbers, our employment here won't last very long if we don't do something about, you know, that kind of number, because obviously, we had to have certain reserves that the state required, and it would be no way to maintain this program moving forward. And health insurance benefits have always been, because as I said earlier, we've always been a family-friendly type benefit program, and to the retirees as well. So we had very significant actions that needed to be taken at that time, and we did that. And it was the Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee that made very dramatic additional changes to the plan. And because of those changes and contributions by the employer, that's the year, as you're going to see in an upcoming slide, and that's why we want to share all this information with you, the employer actually raised premiums in one year for 14%, which was the most you've done in seven or eight years. Well, numbers turned around for us in a variety of ways. Catastrophic claims, to our benefit, were almost eliminated in the plan and have been eliminated for several years. The additional resources with the employer contribution, the 30% increase that I told you that employees and retirees made for themselves, their dependents, all significantly impacted the plan, so that in 2015, we had an $8 million more revenue than we had expenses. And in 2016, we had another 8.9 million, which gave us very significant reserves. As a matter of fact, as you'll see at the end there, in 2014, we were so worried about where things were going with that almost 10, over $10 million loss, $11 million, close to $11 million loss, that we actually went to the board and had the board, and the board granted us the ability to move $3 million that we had in property casualty workers' comp. We had very good reserves at that time into the health insurance program, and it's still there to this day because we thought, you know, the bottom was ready to fall out in the following year. But the board made very significant changes, and that's what occurred. And so we are rather healthy, and I'll talk more about the health of that in a couple of slides. Other fiscal impacts that have had an influence on where we are today. During 2014 to 2016, under the new pharmacy program, you remember I mentioned that we went to Cigna in 2014 after an RFP process, we actually chose to get rebates for certain drugs, and that, those rebates equaled, over that period of time, that three-year period, $3.4 million. That all came back into the plan. By the way, so you know, all these dollars that I'm talking about, we track on a line-by-line basis, all the expenses, where the plan is, what's pharmacy, what, you know, what are consultant fees, reinsurance costs, money's coming back into the plan. And we share that with every member of the Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee, including your appointees, so they know exactly what's happening over time. Whenever we meet, we give them an update of that plan. We received in rebates $3.4 million. In addition, we participated in, under the Affordable Care Act, one of the things that they did, saying, hey, we want to encourage you to keep your retirees in your plan. And so from 2006 to 2016, we received, through the help of our consultant, because we made the application to federal government for this, we received retiree drug subsidy amounts of $4 million, which was to help us with what we did with the pharmacy program, including the fact that our under-65 retirees were allowed to stay in our pharmacy plan as well, and that gained us a smaller amount, $141,000. Now, there were costs under the Affordable Care Act that we were required to pay, and that's the negative $1 million that you see there from 2014 to 2016. Those were basically employer taxes that were required for transitional reinsurance, which really funded the subsidy program that the federal government had, still had in place until recently, or it's still there, but we'll see where that goes. And the Patient Center Research, or it's called PCOR, which we are still paying a small amount, $14,000 a year. But during the 2014 to 16, we paid the federal government those, a little over $1 million because of the Affordable Care Act, which was an additional cost to the plan. Now, most recently, we have adopted some additional strategies. We have a, we added a preferred urgent care network to all the plans, which is very, I think, favorable for employees and the plan, because of the very favorable rates that we were able to negotiate. An employee can go to an urgent care instead of an emergency room, and it costs them $30, and then the plan pays the rest, and it's at a very affordable rate. As a matter of fact, the rates are so good, they're actually better than, in some cases, in a lot of cases, if the person went to their own private physician, the overall cost for us and the employees is lower at the urgent care center. And that has worked extremely well for, I think, from the employee independents who use that service, as well as the county. As you're going to see, we have dramatically reduced our emergency room costs, something that, once again, when we meet with our, the providers and the hospital systems, and they share the information with us of where they are, they help guide us toward this better solution over time, which we've only had in place for a limited time. You may also remember, over the last two years, we've also implemented some wellness program requirements, that in order for people to receive incentives under the PPO or the HMO, we just want to make them more aware. All they needed to do as employees, excuse me, is to participate in biometric screening. And there's some future things that we can do over time, and we're going to look at that as we move forward to make it a little bit more aggressive, so that we can hopefully help people get to a better place in terms of their own care. And obviously, that'll have a further impact on keeping our costs and expenses reasonable within the program. We discontinued Medicare-eligible retirees to stay on a self-funded plan, very similar to what other employers have done. It's not something unique to us. It was happening in a lot of places, and we did that in 2016. We actually brought it forth to the board a year earlier, but the board decided not to do it at that time. So we went ahead and we did that and became effective 2016. And we've received some positive feedback from people who actually saw these plans as meeting their needs at a cost that was more affordable than it would have been had we continued them in the self-insured program. Because of the things that I've just described, in 2016, we were able to reduce the employer expenses by 4%, which was about $1.9 million a year. And so, and let me mention to you here that we have the potential for expanding the wellness-based adherence program moving forward. We did take a year that we've waited, but we're going to look at, do we become more aggressive? Cigna has given us some options, you'll see some of those here, to look at as we're moving forward. And so with that, I think, it gets us to the point of, you know, where are we and what does the future hold for us? This next graph does something for you, which shows you, in the green, what are This next graph does something for you, which shows you, in the green, what our premiums have been over time compared to what our medical and pharmacy claims has been. And what you'll see is, well, we've been doing very well, and understand, this is a six-year going to 19, this is from 2009, projected out to 2019. And obviously, where you see the green above the black, black is the medical and pharmacy claims, that those are good years for the plan, that's where you're building reserves. The two years that I told you we lost the $10 million, those are the two years where you see the green significantly below, the revenues below, the plan expenses in those couple of years. And so what you see is, we're going to, in 2019, based on where we currently are, we're going to hit that point where expenses are going to, once again, potentially exceed the revenue. The good news for us is that the reserves that we've built in the last couple of years doesn't make that as much as a catastrophic concern as it might otherwise have been. And so, as we look at where we are in the plan and where we're going to go moving forward, that's an important piece of information to keep in the back of your mind. Let me share for you now where plan costs and the employer contribution rate has gone over time. From 2001 to 2009, you'll see that there was never a year where we were at least not 5.7% higher every year, meaning the employer contribution rates went up anywhere from 5.75% to 12% a year. Then remember, 2010, when we hit that very difficult time period, we actually reduced the rates. We were at $907 per month, per eligible, full-time eligible employee for the plan. That's what employers were contributing for each of those employers. That number dropped by 13.61% in 2010. That's because of the cost shift and everything else that I've described since then. In 2011, we raised that by 5%, and then you'll see we had two years of zero increases. Once again, those were rather difficult years, and the employer wasn't in a position to make any additional contributions. So we did the kind of plan changes that I've already reviewed with you, that helped us be able to sustain the plan and get us to where we needed to be. You already will recall that we lost in 2013 and 2014 over $10 million, even after we made all those other shifts in the expenses, so that in 2015, when we made all the significant changes, we also had an employer increase of 14%. And we did it in 2016 as well, anticipating that we only had one good year, it raised another 4%. We then lowered in 2017, as I've told you, by 4%, that was the $1.9 million I just spoke about on the prior slide. And because of all the good information that I've shared with you, we were able to, and will be, as part of the tentative budget that you receive, this year, further reduce the employer contribution rates by another 8%. And that actually is part of the funding that would be available, and because of the cost shift that occurred, that would be recommending to the board, that covers about half of the monies that would be needed for the, any proposed salary increase that the board chooses to give. Projected revenues for 2017 are $45 million from the employer. Employee premiums for themselves, that means an employee who only has coverage for themselves still is contributing premium dollars, that's $1 million for their own coverage. For their dependents, whether it's a spouse, or children, or family, they're contributing $4.1 million. You remember the spousal surcharge I told you about for those 177 people? That equates to about $204,000. And then retirees are contributing in terms of premiums, and understand that these are the under-65 retirees, because the over-65 are in fully insured programs now, another $2.5 million, which is going to provide $53 million of revenue this year. Now, next year's revenue is going to be reduced by approximately $3.6 million if the board adopts the reduced premium rates as part of the budget that's being submitted, which would give us about $49.8 million. And when you look at that monthly expense chart that I talked to you about, that we give to the Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee, you know, we're going to be very close to having revenues meet expenses next year. Now, let me tell you one other thing that I think you'd find important, and that is, from 2009 to the present, what has been the cost share between employer and employee members who are participating in the plan? And back in 2009, you'll see that the employer was contributing $45 million approximately, and when you take into account out-of-pocket expenses and premiums that were paid, employees were covering about 20%, about $11.5 million between those two figures in 2009. The change, everything that we've described up to now, and the cost shifts that happened in 2010 and 2015, today, the employer's not paying $45 million, it was $38.2 million in terms of what the employer's paying, while the member contribution, and this is for expenses in the plan, reserve dollars are still building. The employee is paying between out-of-pocket and premiums about $16.7 million. So it's closer to a 70/30 split. So that's basically what's happened from 2009 to 2017, in terms of the cost shift. It's not all in the premium, a lot of plan costs are really out-of-pocket expenses, which don't travel through the employer. They're direct pays from the employee to either the physician, hospital, or whoever the provider is, but that's still an out-of-pocket expense in terms of deductible or copayments that you make in the plans. Now, how are those costs allocated? Well, you'll see, for our plan in 2016, inpatient hospital care is about 20% of our overall costs at $9 million. Outpatient hospital care, that's another close to 20%. So you can see about $18 million goes to, a little less than that, goes to hospitals. Primary care physicians are 1.74%. A specialty is significantly more than that, any specialist that you're referred to from the primary care, you can see significantly more dollars there, 17%, $7 million, almost $7.5 million. And pharmacy, let me move over to that one, pharmacy is 18%, $8 million. Now, I will tell you, that is a number that, I don't want to say shocking, it's actually a great number in terms of where we are, because I will tell you, two or three years ago, we were at $11 million. And so the changes that have occurred, between changes in copayment, et cetera, have gotten this to a very affordable number, when I say affordable, relative to what the rest of the plan costs are, that we're lower than 20%. And so there's a balancing there, but I will tell you that our medical trend, when we look at a 12-month medical trend, and you ask where we are today, it's at the 14% range, which is pretty high, although we're doing very well in the plan. And the reason is, and when Mr. Visco shared this with me, and they gave it to me, I said, no, there's no way that that can be at 14%, and then our overall medical trend is at 7% or 8% or 6.7%, that means pharmacy has to be, if it's only 20% of the cost, we have to be down 25%. Well, that's exactly where we are. And that's why our overall medical trend shows in that 7% range for the last 12-month period, all right? And we pay very close attention to those numbers.
Admin expenses.
Excuse me?
Admin.
All right, oh, yeah, 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 you want to take credit for that, for sure. Admin expenses, under the Affordable Care Act, a vendor comes in, they are able to charge up to 15%. So if we were a business, we could charge 15% admin costs, it's what's permitted under the Affordable Care Act. Our admin costs, when you take all our costs, including staffing, what we pay the consultant, everything else, the staff that we have onboard, the assistance that we provide, excuse me?
These are administrative.
Go ahead, you can talk. I'll let you talk now, we're getting close to the end.
That's the biggest part of that.
It's the total, it's the total cost of operating the plan. In the Affordable Care Act world, the commercial sector, they're saying, basically, commercial care can spend 15 cents of every dollar collected on administration and profit. 85 cents has to go to claim. In our case, we spend 7 cents of every dollar on administration, and 93 cents goes to claim. That's very significant.
All right.
Almost half. Almost half.
Yeah, yeah, and we're doing well in that regard. As a matter of fact, if you go back to the fully insured, you'll see what they wanted to charge us for administrative costs, because they had to give that number to us back in the 2015 fully insured slide. We have that, but needless to say, I think we're doing rather well in that regard. The next area I wanted to talk about, really talks about medical claims and comparison. You heard me talk about catastrophic claims. Well, you know, when you do changes to premiums, it has a significant impact on people, especially when you look and notice that, and this is a number for 2016, for that plan year, you know, insurance is all about, you know, sharing risk, and who needs, who needs care, you know, when it comes due, and it's your time to go to the hospital, or something happens to a loved one or family member. You'll see that, and these are our actual numbers for 2016, 55% of our employees have less than $500 of claims a year. That's, that's over half of the people that are in our plan, or very close to half. They don't have $500 of claims, as a matter of fact, 500 of them don't have any claims that they submit. But as you get to higher threshold claims, you can see how those dollars really build up, so that, in fact, we end up with probably 6%, 7% of our people who participate in our claims are responsible for almost 20 of the $30 million that you see there in the costs. And quite honestly, that's what health insurance is about. And what happens is, your costs go up because you get significant potential catastrophic claims, especially when you have unlimited potential liability, so it's something you have to be ready for, and I can tell you that our plan, I think, is, is ready to handle those kind of situations, and we're doing pretty well. But I think that's an important number, because when we look at where you're going in the future and what you're doing, you can see that, you know, you think, well, I'm only raising this by a small amount. Depending on where you are from a salary level, a small amount, when a lot of people don't have hardly any cost in it. And understand, remember, those first dollars come out of pocket. We don't even let you use your HRA dollars until you've had either 150, excuse me, 125 or 250.
250, 500.
250, is it still 250, 500?
Yeah.
Well, that's even higher, 250, 500 in the plans. Let me also talk to you about some of the other things moving forward that are going to be important to us. One, you'll see where you, where you have your services provided makes a big difference. If you have outpatient surgery in a hospital, the average allowance is $7,400, while if you're at a freestanding, not hospital-related, that's $2,600. The very important one is emergent care, emergency care, ER room, our average allowance was $2,400. Any one person that we can keep from the emergency room and send them to urgent care, it costs us $119, $30 from the employee, and the employer pays the rest of that. Now, that's significant, and I'm going to show you in another slide, and what happened last year, how we really have shifted emergency room care rather significantly in one year. Once again, for CTs or MRIs in a hospital setting, $1,274 is the average allowance. If they go to a freestanding facility, it's $459, and the same kind of numbers are there for your radiology care. And once again, the difference between generic and brand, it's almost 10 times the number, 41 for generic, 406 for the average brand.
What's also important here is, this is not a national survey or regional numbers, these are our numbers. This is coming right out of our self-insured, actual experience in Brevard County. It really makes for significant.
A very important point with that is, the only reason we have those numbers and can give them specific to you is because we're self-insured. If you're fully insured, you don't get that information, because that's something that's certain of that information, those costs are proprietary to the, obviously, to the vendor, because it's their book of business, so they're not as open to share that information, at least not to the degree that we have access to it as a self-insured plan. Now, I want to move just for a couple of minutes to Gatsby 45. That is something that, as I mentioned earlier, is post-employment benefits, that, under the governmental accounting standards, since 2004, you are required to account for that, and the accruals for this OPEB liability, for your health insurance benefits as well as for life and disability, have to be reported on your financial statements. Once again, you are not required or mandated to fund it, but they say it is an unfunded liability, and, you know, when this first came out, many employers started looking, say, hey, can we and should we fund it? There was even talk here whether we could get there, we didn't think we were in a position to do it at that time, so we were not, you know, we didn't head in that direction back in 2004. But what we did do is try to reduce that liability as much as we could. So we're only required to disclose the information, but you're not necessarily required to fund it. So why don't we look at what has happened under Gatsby 45, the valuation. Every two years, you're required under Gatsby to get an actuarial analysis of what your unfunded liability is. Our unfunded liability is dependent on, each employer has their own, so for example, remember I talked to you about the inter-local agreements? If an employer chooses to leave, they have to take their unfunded liability with them when they leave. So any of the charter officers or other agencies, whatever their individual numbers, we get it done every two years. We know what the plan's aggregate liability, which remains the plans, but we also know what we as an individual employer, what our liability is, and which each of the charter officer's liability is, if they choose to leave, what do they have to bring with them. And as long as they're in the plan, it's the plan's liability. Well, back in 2008, the aggregate liability was 140, unfunded liability was $141 million. And so, you know, go back through the PowerPoint that you've seen, all the changes that we've made, which, you know, has had a very significant impact on both over- and under-65 retirees, there's no denying that, but it reduced the liability, and it was really the only way we could continue funding the program over time. We've tried to do, and I think the boards tried to do the best they can, buy retirees, especially with some of the fully insured plans that we now have in place, but we have reduced that liability rather significantly by the various steps that we've already gone over, to the point that in 2018, you know, we dropped in 2010 to $96 million for the plan, it went up in 2012, but in 2014, it dropped to $63 million, and then, when we shifted everything to the fully insured plans for the over-65, it dropped to $18.9 million in 2016. And that's when fully insured related Medicare products for over-65 were offered, and people, you know, a lot of people obviously moved into those products, because you no longer had the self-insured plan.
Can we just take a second to explain the chart for folks who might be looking over our shoulders and not reading this? The ARC is an annual required contribution. The actuary says, that's the investment we would have to made every year for several years going forward to fund the actuarially accrued liability, the unfunded liability. So that $141 million liability would require $12 million investment every year for 20, 30 years before we could fund that, fully fund that liability. So that's why you see those two numbers. ARC is what we need to fund on an annual basis, the AAL accrued liability is our total exposure.
Yeah, and the reason I wouldn't, I didn't focus on that, is because today, when I give you the reserve numbers that we have, it's all funded. We have those dollars in the reserves today, so we don't actually have to do that, because we have those dollars currently available. They don't need to stay there over time, and we'll talk about, you know, what are our options moving forward. Quite honestly, that's why you see the reduction that you do this year of the 8%, because we're trying to get it to a balanced revenues and expenses, now that we've had those couple of very good years after those two significantly drops. The other thing I wanted to do, and this came up very recently, was, and we started sharing this with the employees. sharing this with the Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee members at the, at the last meeting. We have quarterly meetings with both Health First and Cigna, which are our current two providers. And we go over in detail all the different areas, you know, in that pie chart where I showed you inpatient services, outpatient radiology, we go into it, into great detail, even by hospitals, so we know exactly what's happening. We are sharing, starting to share that information with members of the Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee so that, one, we can tell the story, and, two, as we move forward in time and we have to take additional steps in times to, you know, provide quality service but in the most cost-effective manner so that as, you know, we, we understand that resources in the future are still going to be limited. And so we're not done. This is not, this is the end and we don't have to do anything more. We'll have to do more over time. We want to make sure that we're able to communicate effectively and the people that are involved in the decision-making, you know, will have all the information to help us make the best decisions so that the plan performs, provides the best value and, and members are participating in a way that keeps the plan costs as reasonably, as reasonable as they can be moving forward. So we are sharing a variety of things, including summaries and what are the influences of what's out there. For example, I mentioned to you earlier, but one of the things we share is that spousal costs are fifty-four percent higher than costs of subscriber, but dependent costs are forty-six percent lower. And that kind of makes sense because your dependent costs are your children and typically, on average, they're going to have less costs. Outpatient surgery has decreased by seventeen percent, but the average cost of outpatient surgery has increased by forty percent. So how much it's utilized has gone down, but those costs have gone up.
Is there any reason that you can point to?
Yeah, well, there's a variety of reasons and we're looking at it, i.e., we're looking at to see where it is among certain providers, because one of the things we're going to look at, and you'll see it on the next page, a couple of pages, is we're going to look at networks within networks, i.e., if we, if you're willing to steer to a lower-cost provider, will you, you know, can you reap some additional benefits from that? Saves the plan money. And the best example is the urgent care, which I'm going to talk to you about as we get, let me get to that next page right now, you'll see that. First of all, our medical costs have decreased in the last year by six point six three dollars, six dollars and sixty-three cents per member per month. That means we did very good. We actually, one reason we did so well in the numbers of eight million dollars for those couple of years, yes, the employer rate went up, yes, we did cost shifts, but utilization and related costs also went down. Our medical trend, while the national trend was still six to eight percent, our medical trend for the last few years has been negative, meaning we actually were doing better, we were less than zero. It was a lower cost, just like, and I mentioned to you pharmacy was a big, has been and continues to be a big part of that.
So are we, are those numbers going in that direction because we're lucky or because we're getting younger?
I, I, there's a variety of factors and, and like many things, there's no easy one reason solution as to what that is. Some is catastrophic claims and we've been blessed to not have some of the ones we had in a couple of prior years, but there's a variety of different reasons. I'd like to say some of the changes that we've made have significantly influenced that. There's no doubt when we went to fully insured plans for the over sixty-five retirees, if you don't think that that has significant impact on the reduction of our pharmacy costs on a per member per month basis, the answer is yes. I remember, you know, just going to the physician recently myself and, and asking how many prescriptions I was on, and I told him, four, four. And he said, wow, that's hardly any. And so, you know, let me realize that as you get older, you know, the expectation is who knows how many prescriptions you might be on. And so that definitely, you know, there's demographics plays a role.
So what you're saying is somebody that's young like me, when I get old like you, I want to have four instead of one?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what I was saying.
We mixed up. Well, I only have one.
We ask ourselves the same questions you're asking, and unfortunately, only time will tell. Are we seeing this trend, this, because people are avoiding care or have they really changed their behavior and are they making better choices? We'd love to be able to say it's the latter of the two, but we won't know that for certain until we get consistency in our trend over time.
Yeah. Well, and that's what's really interesting about the data that you keep because you get answers.
Yeah. Let me go to the next item, which is you'll see that in the last year, emergency room utilization has decreased ten percent and urgent care utilization has increased one hundred and sixteen percent. And that's very, very good information for us. It means that that's the, the first example of the kind of steerage that we need to try to see in other areas because obviously, as you recall, the difference between an emergency room visit and an urgent care visit is very substantial. It's a lot more than ten times the difference. So even though we went up ten times in urgent care, that's, you're saving for every emergency care, emergency room visit that you save, you know, you're doing very, very well. Now, the, the number of inpatient admissions has, has decreased. The average cost of admission to the hospital is increasing by twenty percent. Well, you know, that's good too. That just means that less people are going in, but when they go in, they need to be there for whatever the care is. And so, and pharmacy costs, you can see, has decreased by thirteen point three dollars per member per month. That's very, very dramatic. I'd be surprised to see those kind of numbers in the next couple of years. It's going to go up, especially, especially with specialty care medications, more and more coming on the market, and they have very high costs for very specialized areas of care that are needed. And, and, and we are in a position that we, you know, as, as all plans are, are going to have to provide that. You'll also see that our shift from brand to generics, we, we're at a fill rate of eighty-four percent of available generics are used when they're available. And that, that also helps explain the differential between brand and drugs, but we've already put into place a variety of things that enable us to maximize or encourage people to maximize the use of generic where they're reasonably available. So the future of healthcare and where we're going to go, you know, if you look at everything we've shared, is we're going to look at more and more networks within networks, i.e., how do you help people make choices that are good for them in terms of quality, but also the most affordable? So ambulatory surgery centers off-site rather than in hospital settings to the degree. And sometimes some hospitals are looking at making sure that they restructure because they don't know what's going to happen with the medical care either. You know, they want to stay competitive. They know there's a lot more of these facilities out there, so their rates are being reduced. And as they become reduced, we're in a position to have our providers, either us directly with them or with them, enter into contracts with more affordable costs so we can keep them in that, that type of setting. Radiology, we've already done urgent care, and we're also going to be looking at smartphone applications more and more, especially for younger populations, but even older populations are using smartphones more and more. And to the degree that we can help give them quick, easy, accessible information that'll help them make better decisions, then we'll all benefit from that. We also have the opportunity to expand adherence wellness, not only to the participating employee members, but to their spouses and potentially to their dependents. And more employers are looking to do that. Once again, if you just do it on biometric screenings, but you require that, then all it does really is help them have better information so that if they have an aha moment and say, oh, I didn't realize, I had no idea this is where I was or was prediabetic or whatever it happens to be, it hopefully will help them make better decisions for their own, you know, lifestyle and their own care moving forward. So that brings us to where are we today in terms of the group health plans financials? And so the next sheet that I'm sharing with you is what are our expenses? What were they in sixteen? What are you projected for seventeen? And what do we anticipate them to be for 2018? And you'll see that our expenses for 2016, all combined, that's the plan expenses for medical care, all our administrative costs, the pharmacy, et cetera, was fifty-one point three million. We projected for this year to be fifty point seven million. And next year, it was projected because the medical trend for the last twelve months is approximately, what, seven percent?
It's a little lower than that for twelve months, but we usually go back a little bit further than twelve months.
Okay. So somewhere in the six to seven percent range. And so when you look at that, that's what we're anticipating next year's expenses to be based on our own medical trend. And once again, a couple of years earlier, we actually had a negative medical trend. Our annual plan revenue over expenses, and understand that projections for 2018 were done, these projections were done by the actuary before we made any recommendation to the board, because it was done several months ago, about where the premiums will be for next year. So they have to be adjusted, as you see in the bottom there, by the three point six million, that would be less revenue that would be coming in if we reduce the employer premium by that eight percent rate. But the bottom line is, we were anticipating annual plan revenue to exceed expenses if we kept it where it was by one point two million. We were still favorable even with the medical trend. Now, the state requires approximately eleven point seven million dollars in the IBNR reserve, and Gatsby forty-five, as I already showed you, our numbers for next year is anticipated to be twenty-one point two million. When you add that, that's about thirty-three, almost thirty-four million dollars. And we anticipate having thirty-six point nine million dollars in the, the reserve at that period. Now, you do know, hopefully, you recall that we are potentially using over the next three years, two point two five million dollars on road projects, but that will be paid back to the fund, you know, in twenty, at the end of that three-year period. So that one will be coming back. It's not like, not going there. But, so the numbers are going to go down and what you, when you go look at that, it'll go down by that, that small amount. But if in fact we get the three point six million dollars and everything you see there, we actually, that ending balance reserve will go down by another three point six million because we will not have the same amount of revenue when we reduce that by the eight percent. So the plan will still be healthy, will be very healthy if we keep things as they are. And that's what we're hoping that, you know, the board decides, you know, after hearing this review, that we are in a good place and, and that's what you want to do moving forward. But I thought before, you know, the board made that history, those, had that type of discussion, it would be important to know where we were, how we've changed things over time and how we've gotten to where we are today. I hope that what you've seen is that, in fact, we have not been a stagnant or status quo plan. We have very significantly changed over the last sixteen years, whenever the need was there. And even when the need wasn't there, the board has, the Employee Benefits Insurance Advisory Committee and the board have taken, I think, rather aggressive actions over time to make sure that we have a plan that puts us in the kind of position that we're in today. So it's a good problem to have that we have not only adequate results, but we are, we are fully reserved and fully funded moving forward. And that's not been easy and it's been something that's been a burden not only to the board, but obviously to plan participants in terms of their paying. You know, we, it is still a very good plan. I'd be the first to tell you, I believe it is still a very good plan for all the participants, the board. We all should be thankful for what the board has done over time and where we are today in terms of that as a benefit. It's a, you know, in the public sector, benefits have always been an important part of why employees sometimes come to the organization. And, and this board has always been rather sensitive to employees and where we are. The last page that I have is how funding is, is provided. And I will tell you that, you know, annual funding, and, and you can see that we are going to move to annual funding next year is for forty-two million dollars. That's what we're projecting, that's what we're recommending. You know, there's been some discussions, well, should it be only those that are participating in the plan or should it be from all those full-time eligibles? And I will tell you that from a plan funding perspective, when you are a self-insured plan, you need to look at what your expenses are and what your revenue's coming in, how it's funded. When you say you need forty-two million dollars and you know that employees and depend, dependents and retirees are paying X amount of dollars, you know, based on your expenses and what you need your reserves to be, you know the amount of money that you need to charge. Whether you charge that across the board for all budgeted positions or as we do for all full-time eligible positions that exist, it's the same forty-two million dollars at the end of the day, whether or not, well, if I don't have a reserve, then you're charging for people who don't go in the plan. No, you would be using a different number, meaning your, if you include your waiver people, which is the way we do it, we're dividing the waiver people plus the enrolled medical plan people and dividing that into the total annual funding that's needed. That's how you determine the employer amount. What that does for us is create less administrative hassle. Because if you are a small agency and let's say a commission office and you have four or five people in it, you know that when you create your budget every year, if you are funding for all your full-time eligible people and we would charge ten thousand dollars a year for that, you're fully funded no matter when someone comes in or leaves the organization. If you did it by only those who choose to participate in the plan, well, in this example, it would be ten percent less than with the waiver people, but we're still charging the same forty-two million dollars. So instead of ten thousand dollars a year, we'd be charging those who participate eleven thousand dollars a year. How that hurts the smaller plans or the smaller people that are participating is if you have five people and they, and, and two of them don't participate in the plan, you're paying three times eleven thousand dollars, thirty-three thousand dollars. Well, when one of those two leave and someone new comes in, where does your eight thousand dollars pay for, for the new person? It's not in your budget. So we have chosen and we have for the last twenty-eight years funded it this way. You know, you heard the clerk speak about that issue. He's, I think, very well aware of what we're talking about here. And so they do participate, and I just thought it was important for us to share with you the reasoning of why we do it the way they are. There's no hidden formula or magic. It's not about whether or not you do it for the people who are waiving or those are the full-time eligible as we've always done it. The important number is what's the annual funding target that you're looking for the employer? And then you divide that by the number of people or employer individuals that are in the plan. And that's how we've done it. And that's what we're hopeful that the board will want to continue to do moving forward. And with that, we're available to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from the board?
I have one caveat I have to add just to, to get on the record. We've talked a lot about the data we have available as a self-insured plan and just so that folks who are listening and understand, that data is all, is all de-identified data. In keeping with HIPAA and privacy rules, we do not know what, what individual is treating for what purposes. We don't have any specific information on the health care that individuals receive. We get de-identified or aggregated data which helps us manage the plan. I just wanted to make our employees comfortable again that we don't know who's treating for what. It's none of our business. Privacy laws prevent that from becoming an issue for us.
Yeah. What we do know is the number of treatments and what the cost is at what facilities, and that's what I was referring to.
On the, on the waived medical?
Yeah.
Is it roughly proportional? So if there were, you know, five county commission offices and, and four of them had four folks that, you know, received the benefits, and then you had one, right, that, that everyone had a waiver, it would be disproportionate? But is the four thirty-nine spread evenly across those constitutional offices?
Yeah, it's very close, surprisingly so. Yes, sir. And obviously, the smaller you are, the more potential for differential because one or two people will make a difference.
Any other thoughts, questions?
Yeah, when you look at the, on page twenty-five, the, the health plan trend, rolling plan, once these cross 2019, theoretically, we would still have a reserve accumulating all up to that point, correct? Now, after that, when it goes, I assume it could go, continue to go further up, the claims could go up versus the premiums. So I guess at that point, we would adjust or not.
I, I would suggest this to you, that we have the ability, because of where the reserves are today, that you could take a more moderate position than you would otherwise require to do in terms of what the medical trend is and projected trends because you today have healthy reserves. So if we projected the medical trend to be eight percent, could you get away with only doing four? So if we projected the medical trend to be 8%, could you get away with only doing four? The answer would be yes, because of the amount of reserves that you have built up now.
Okay. The other thing, just a point, I guess last year, we had the biometric wellness data that was done, I guess it was probably quite a bit of data there, it'd be interesting to see this year what the differences are.
Yes, sir, we're looking for that, too. It would be our second year of data, so we'll see if there's been any movement or trend. We were, it was interesting to see where the information took us, we were expecting to see certain things in our, in our community, we didn't see it, we saw different things, and that's helping us direct our wellness initiatives as we go forward. So it's going to take a while, but we like to string a couple of years together before we come back and say that we've got some, we've got some definitive trend or analysis that we can, we can hang our hats on.
Okay, yeah. And let me also mention that, you know, based on, depending on what happens with the budget, of course, that we did hear from the clerk's office that they, you know, they had talked about they were looking at other plans, et cetera, and it is their intention, they've, they've let us know that they are going to stay in the plan in the upcoming year, so I think that's good news.
That was one of the questions I was going to ask our clerk of court, if he had any thoughts that he would be willing to share.
Okay. Well, that's big, 8%. If the 8% holds, well, we had to come in, we had one, we came in, we called Blue Shield at 12%, but at $100,000, it's not worth making a change, $100,000 savings out of $3 million. But for us, it would be $300,000 if you all don't make a change. So it would be a difference if you don't make the reduction. And I know Frank and I, because we've argued this now for 15 years. The point, the point is on the waivers, is it, by accurately billing, you get a better indication of true cost. You don't, you don't pull up with your family to the restaurant and just get billed for five people, no matter how many people are in the car. So you get a better cost accounting if you get through and only bill for the people to take the system.
Makes sense. What is that bill going on? Somebody stuck in the elevator?
It's the elevator. Well, we don't smell smoke again, Robert.
So, but that's our understanding, is with the 8%, I saw what you'd sent out, and so everybody was getting reevaluated. So if you stay with that, then we're staying with the county plan.
Yeah, and that's what we're hopeful of.
Well, I would hope so, too. The other, since you called me up here.
Way to go, Kirk.
Well, the other, the other topic that has not been discussed today, and you wouldn't have to make a decision right now, but you might want to think about it, is your end-of-year surplus, and what you want to do with the end-of-year surplus. At the end of this fiscal year, you'll have a surplus from this year in the insurance fund, and you can choose to either leave that as a carry-forward reserve, or you can allocate that back where it came from. So if your carry-forward was going to be, let's say, $4 million, you could break that back out between the general fund, the enterprise funds, and certain constitutional officers. Clerk would be one, Melburn Tillman would be another. So that is money that would be available if you chose to use it. It's just a thought, when you hit the end of the fiscal year. I know our, our plan is to request that money be redistributed back to where it came from at the end of the year, that would be the board's decision on what to do with that.
You're talking about the 21.8, is that the number?
No, that's, that's a bogus number, that's just a plug number, that doesn't really mean anything. I don't want to get in a big argument, I know Rita's CPA, but, but the GASP thing is just, it's just a number that hangs out here, it doesn't really mean anything. But at the end of this year, you'll run a surplus, you'll have revenue, will exceed expenditures for this fiscal year in your insurance fund. So at the end of the year, you can take that money, use it for a carry-forward into your reserves for next year, or you could redistribute that back to where it came from, which, in other words, certain percentage would be general fund, certain percentage enterprise fund, and certain percentage clerk, Melburn Tillman. And what's your projected, Frank, what, about 4 million?
The actuary gave us a 4.4 million projected for '17, yes.
End of the year?
Yes, sir.
So, so you could take that 4.4, and you could break that out to other funds if you chose to. I mean, we will request it, but it's still a board decision what to do with that.
Well, I would be amenable to that, but I would want full discussion amongst the folks that are in the know and the commissioners.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a today decision, anyway, this is, this is an October-type decision after the fiscal year ends.
It gives us something to contemplate, that's my point.
Right, it does, you know, it does, Commissioner, it gives you something, but, you know, anything bad could happen, you could have a couple disastrous diseases show up between now and then.
You've got six months left in the plane, or five months left in the plane year for stuff to go south on us, so that's what our concern is.
That's right, and, you know, and it's sad, but everybody's worked with someone, all of a sudden, you've got an employee, or their son's got cancer, their wife's got cancer, or something, and expensive, not, not a broken ankle, but something that's very expensive. And that will throw your numbers out of the kiln real fast.
And alternatively, it also helps you reduce, you know, as Commissioner Barfield mentioned, you could reduce the next year's needed premium increase by that amount, too. So if there's anything that's needed, because our medical trend ends up being, you know, above the very good trend that we've had the last several years, you can hedge that a little bit by, by using some of those resources. So there's different things to talk about as we move forward.
And you'll know in six months.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a decision you make until October, anyway, after the fiscal year ends.
About what percent falls into the general fund, I understand some has to go to enterprise, and some of the constitutional offices, just offhand, is it half?
Yeah, close to half, yes, sir.
The split goes about half, half goes to the board, the half goes to the participating entities. Of the half that goes to the board, then you've got a general fund split from there.
Yeah, well, we have some, right, because you have a variety of dollars that, you know, from the sheriff, et cetera, which is a large...
That does not end in general fund, I got it, yeah.
Well, it does end in general fund.
Yeah.
No, no, I'm serious, I'm not, it does end in general fund, they're, they're general-funded agencies.
I'm with you.
So you don't, you don't, you don't come October and hand money back to general-funded agencies.
I get it.
It's the non-general-funded agencies that you... But no, it's just really important to remember that.
Yes. $95 million's important.
All right, see now, and I only need $200,000, it's a small part of that. Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm just glad you addressed it, and it has been a good trend, and I hope it continues, we'll just have to see. Some years you're just lucky, then, some years you're not.
That's it.
I know, I know, I will tell you that Jerry and Frank is, they're very cautious with your insurance money.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Okay, and the other, do you guys have anything you wanted to add?
No, unless you wanted to go revisit the issue of the membership on the...
Yeah, that's, that's next on my list.
Do we need board direction for this, or no?
Staff direction?
Staff, I mean, sorry, staff direction.
It's, well, you can go over it again.
Well, yeah, and it was, if the board wanted to make a motion to add a member of the Citizens Budget Review Committee...
My question would be to the board, think about the pros and the cons of adding somebody. Personally, I can't see any, any problem or con to it, the advantage would be we have somebody from the Citizens Budget Review Committee added, and it's another set of eyes.
Yeah, and, and I don't, I think Mr. Pluskis is probably my appointee, I think, on that one.
He's the alternate.
Yeah, Doug Baker, do you know who's, who appointed him?
He's, he's a CPA.
Yeah, but is he your, your appointee?
I believe so.
Yes, he's D1's appointee.
Yeah, well, smart guy.
He got appointed by a smart person, so, yeah.
He's a Brownie. Until he was a Tallahassee.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to add a representative of the CPRC.
A second.
Who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no, pass is 4-0. Do we have anything else that we want to cover?
We're good, sir, thank you.
I, I want to thank the two of you for your vision, your hard work, and your perseverance, and your dogged perseverance to get us where we are. And that's, that's no small compliment, because when Commissioner Barfield and I took office back in '14, as you can see by the numbers we've already looked at, we were not in a, we were not in a good place. So it's largely due, you give us a lot of credit, the board, but you guys are the ones that were the steering committee, you gave us the leadership that we needed, so a big thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, then this meeting is adjourned.
No, 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 we have reports.
We're not forget.
We're not done yet.
Oh, I'm, I'm wanting to get out of here, man. Okay, moving right along.
Okay. Commissioners, I've got an email, I believe I've distributed, you show how, and you get one to the clerk, and dealing with Parks and Recreation and Integrity Golf, I've distributed an email that staff received this morning from Integrity Golf terminating their lease agreements, and advising that their last day of operations will be July 30th. I also distributed a copy of Integrity Golf's termination letter that was dated yesterday, July 12th. This morning, I had the opportunity to meet with Manetta, Parks and Recreation's staff, our director, Mary Ellen, the county attorney, and other staff members to address this information and the situation. The county attorney confirmed very early in the meeting that Integrity Golf is in breach of their agreement for a variety of reasons. Additionally, their CEO advised Parks and Recreation, I believe, yesterday afternoon, late yesterday afternoon, that he would be filing both for business and personal bankruptcy. In an effort to address this situation as best we can, I'd like to get the board's authorization to proceed as follows. One, I'm requesting that the board direct staff to immediately begin negotiations and enter into a temporary management agreement with either Cypress Golf Management, who has been maintaining and operating our golf courses for the last 30 to 45 days, and that was only brought to our attention within the last 24 hours. And we need to conduct some due diligence in that regard, to make sure that they would be the right provider. And so because of that, we also want the opportunity to also review and negotiate with, simultaneously with International Golf Management. They did do the golf management, maintenance, excuse me, of our golf courses for the last 20 years that the county operated them. This would be an emergency temporary arrangement, and it's not expected to exceed a six-month period. I do believe we have, from the county attorney's office, should have a copy of the management, a draft management agreement that we utilize.
Yeah, we're working on a management agreement, which tracks the one that we have with the company that was currently doing, Bell Carrier Airport, they have a management agreement down there. It's the same company, but they're obviously pulling on that one, too. The only difference would be that, you know, under that agreement, they're, they're paying us, as opposed to us paying the management company, because they're basing, they're basing their compensation us on revenues that they're receiving. So we'll probably delete, we'll have to delete those provisions in order to get these folks to come and manage it for us, I'm sure, and I don't think they're going to be paying us.
And, yeah, and there's other aspects as well, which is also to request authorization to issue an RFP to seek a long-term solution, whether that's a lease solution, a management solution. We would like to keep that as broad as reasonably possible, to give the board the opportunity to look at what options might be available, but obviously, we need to be acting in that. And then the final request would be permission from the board to transfer 700, approximately $705,000 that is currently held in reserves in Fund 4311, that is a golf reserve fund in that same fund, but place it into the operating line item to be able to pay for management services, the equipment leases that would be needed for the carts and, and other equipment, there's other related expenses during this period of time, so that we can continue to operate the three golf courses until the RFP can be done, and a new firm can be brought in after the board reviews and approves a selection through that process. Mr. Knox, Manetta, Mary Ellen, and I, and other staff are here, available to answer any questions you may have in this regard.
Mr. Knox, since their, Integrity Golf is their intent, they've notified us of their intent to declare bankruptcy?
Well, they didn't notify Mr. Abate that, yes.
Okay, so that precludes any, us having any opportunity to...
Well, his, the intent was to stop us from seeking recourse, but as soon as we seek recourse, we'll, if he does go forward with bankruptcy, there'll be a stay placed on whatever action we file. So until we get it resolved, we'll have to file a claim with a bankruptcy court and go forward on that. If the bankruptcy court lets us litigate it, they'll let us litigate it, if not, they won't, and we'll get some percentage of what we were looking for.
Well, that's, that's what I wanted to know. Okay, so you're looking for board direction, Mr. Barfield?
You know, I've got serious problems with this. For one thing, we had, went into contract with a company, we had workshops, but in May, I think we discussed all of this. I asked the question point-blank, how is the golf with the new company, how is that going? I was told it's doing very well. All of a sudden, we get this notification, do we not have contact with our contractors and know if they're performing or not? Why did this happen? We have a two-week notice, that's just unacceptable, I don't know else to put it.
I think they will tell you that we were directly lied to.
Operations, we've been, we get quarterly reports, we meet with them, we do site inspections, and every indication up until May was good. The county attorney's office, Matt Sauce, Mary Ellen and I had a phone conference with them over a month ago, where they indicated that they might be entering a merger with Cypress.
Well, we should be getting some sort of input on how many rounds of golf we play, all these other things.
We did, we have all of that.
Is it going up, you know?
We have all of that.
What is the revenue coming in? They should know that.
We have all of that. And this was as much a surprise, the last, we got a little curious about the last three weeks, when we were asking for information, and, and the responses were sort of ambiguous. But up until three weeks ago, we had no indication. They gave us their quarterly reports, they've invested capital dollars into all three courses as required as part of the RFP, they reported rounds, they did everything, they've had appointments.
Obviously, we don't have enough requirements of reporting and documentation to support what they're doing. Otherwise, maybe it should be financial, it should be any of this, because it's a big risk here, and we need to relook at that, make sure we have exactly what they need to be reporting. Because, and required has to be from independent CPA, I don't care, but we need to learn from this, and don't let this happen again like this.
Well, I think, one thing, Commissioner, if I may say that, and I'll point to Larry, as you know, we operated the courses at a loss, and part of this next, I think we'll have to determine what is the best way to contract for these services. They were running Savannah's at a loss, and it's been our loss leader, they were running Habitat at a breakeven, and Spencer, about the same, where we normally did well. So they weren't, and they invested a lot of capital dollars, so that first year, we anticipated would be a loser for them. We thought they had the corporate capability to withstand that first year loss, because there was no way they could recover capital investment, all of the equipment lease, and then run breakeven and be okay, but we thought they had the corporate strength.
Well, you know, the other thing is, well, if this is a situation, maybe some way we can put a performance bond up or something, too. That's probably, it would save us a lot of hassle if we could do something like that.
That's an excellent idea.
You know, the other thing is this, on a lighter subject, I guess, but I know we had two companies that came down to, they were both very close, I can't remember who the other company was.
Davy Trees, Davy, out of Ohio.
Is it beneficial for us to go talk to them, too?
Well, there were also, if you recall, that company wanted us to put $600,000 forward, and that the expansion into operations was somewhat new for them, where I think if we look at IBM, who managed our courses from a maintenance perspective for 20 years, they have a very good understanding of the courses and how to maintain them, they just haven't done the operating component.
Some time has passed since that company came to talk to us, so it might be worth talking to them anyway.
Well, we start with hands, I'm sure, we can reach out to them.
Yeah, I have to tell you, I'm astounded, because I just had George Galetko, who's my appointee to the advisory board, in my office Monday or Tuesday of this week, extolling the virtues of how well everything was going out there.
We had minimal complaints. I mean, the initial transition, maybe the first 60 days, we had a few people, I think, that just wanted, you know, normal, they were a little concerned about the county not operating it, there were a lot of volunteers that weren't participating anymore, but then from there on, we got all positive comments following tournaments, et cetera, everything looked great until three weeks ago, and that's the first indication that we weren't getting the responses, and sort of mixed messages, so that was the first.
And although, it's my understanding that they did mention within a very short timeframe ago that they were looking to divest some of their golf courses.
Correct.
But you were specifically told that we were not golf courses, and they were very happy or...
Correct.
Or wanted to stay with us. And that's the part that I'm saying.
Absolutely.
You know, the misinformation that, from where we are today and what they were specifically told within, when was that, Mary Ellen?
At the meeting with Matt Sauce.
It was in the county attorney's office.
About a month ago, and I, we specifically asked because they were divesting themselves of golf courses that were less profitable. And when I specifically asked, they said, no, they wanted to continue their relationship with Brevard County. And additionally, up until Tuesday of last week, they've been responsive. You know, there was a brush pile that was behind a lady's house, and they took care of that brush pile finally, and it was removed on Tuesday of this week. There was some dredging that was asked to be done in one of the lakes. They brought a little backhoe out on Tuesday as well. So there was no indication other than rumors and innuendo, but as we asked directly, they responded, no, they were happy with Brevard County.
Okay, so we know where we are right now.
I have one question, too, I'll ask Mr. Knox. These are all separate LLCs. The bankruptcy, it's just at those LLC level? It doesn't?
It won't, won't know till they file it, but I think it's a personal level also, is what he said.
Yeah, well, yeah, okay. That's all protected, too, I'm sure.
And that bankruptcy comment was made in a conversation at 5:00 yesterday afternoon. I don't know that, I have no written verification, in fact, that that will be, but...
Let him do it, you know.
That was his comment to me personally and professionally.
Mr. Abate, can you tell us a little bit more about the $700,000 surplus? How much is there? You know, how it got there, whether or not that that's been constant, or I didn't know we had a golf reserve, in all honesty.
Yes, and I can call Mr. Larry to come up, and he did share the information. It is a seven, a little over $705,000. It is in that reserve item, and it came from a variety of sources that are there. So why don't you go ahead and...
The $700,000 is actually coming from when we were, when we were actually operating the courses. We had a balance forward from years ago that was actually in a million sum. Every year, we kept on eating into it, and it was determined that eventually that was going to be insufficient to keep operating the courses. That's why we came to the board at the time to ask for us to go to RFP, to go to a management company, or to a lease.
How?
This money is still sitting there because we still have to, at the time, we were anticipating to have to pay for, or actually receive inventory, pay Integrity for the gift cards that are actually redeemed back at the golf courses. So every time somebody redeems a gift card, we were going to have to pay Integrity the money sitting there.
This is an enterprise one?
Yes, sir, it is.
So how much is in total in that reserve fund? Is that the full amount?
That's the full amount, yes, sir.
That is the full amount. So, and how did that million-plus dollars get there? Were the golf courses ever profitable, or was that seeded by the county?
It was actually a general fund that was being received up until, I believe it was about 2010.
Okay.
I'm not 100% sure about that year, but...
It was general fund money?
It was phasing out, yes.
Got it, thank you. Sorry, how long do you anticipate the $705,000 will, is that, I mean, will last all six months?
We are hoping to, yes.
Okay.
Because right now, all we know is that they're talking about a certain fee for the management, and then, of course, we have to figure out what it's going to be for the leasing of carts and all the other equipment that we're going to have to have in there.
So it's between 100 and, what, $110,000 a month is about what the golf courses, you expect, loss? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give you an example that they shared with me this morning. When we had, when we were leasing the golf carts, they were approximately 212 or some number of carts, and they were costing $17,000 a month for that. And so on top of that, and the management fee, which could be in the area of $10,000 or so, we were discussing this morning, you know, that's part of the monthly cost, and of course, equipment, et cetera, you know, to do the mowing, et cetera, which we don't have for that, would be the other part of the cost that we have to put into the equation that as we go out and look in those two or three management companies, you know, we will get that as part of it and make sure that we, you know, we look at the one that's the most cost-effective and best opportunity to try to keep the service level at the best, highest level we can in light of the circumstances that we're facing.
And we pay the $4,000 per year to Valkaria Airport for the Habitat.
Right.
Plus FAA-owned land.
Plus, of course, there'd be utilities. There's other ancillary expenses such as the operating golf system, that the computer reservations, Golf Now is made. There are other ancillary things that we're just now trying to figure out, all the associated expenses.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I wasn't able to pay a lot of attention when you guys went through that process a while ago, and I, to be honest with you, I might be a little ignorant on it because I haven't had time to study out some information. And last time I asked about the golf courses, I knew they were being managed, so they quit losing money. But I just got a general perspective of golf courses as being money pits. And is there any way that we can get out of the golf course business? Can we get it back on the tax roll? I mean, especially since we're going through this type of circumstance, I just, I don't know why county government's in the golf business, and I don't know if it's an idea or if it's possible, but I would, I would like to maybe get out of the business and quit losing money in it. And even if we got it back on the tax roll, sold it for a dollar, you know, they might be making some revenues and paying some business taxes, so...
I made that comment two years ago. If we sold it for a dollar, we're still, we'd be making money.
Yeah.
So...
There's a short answer to that.
Yeah, can we, some of these have, like, the Grand Valkaria, which happens to be in County Commission District III, is federal. So if, you know, there's a whole bunch of ties, but I, there's not, how else can we do it within the guidelines?
Okay.
So that has to be, I mean, the gentleman out there was talking about potentially it's developable land if there is a component of aircraft, and he had an idea that was very interesting, that you build these homes with, instead of a garage, you put an airplane in your garage, that lots of people like doing this and rolling your airplane out right to the, you know, airport, which would, he thought, in his opinion, you know, potentially meet the guidelines, which would allow us then to shift that way. So maybe if we start thinking outside the box, you know, we can get there because I don't necessarily disagree, but there are some tough ties on many of these golf courses, which I'm sure your office will give us the brief on them, so we're all on the same page as we, you know, as we move forward.
Yeah, Savannas has a reverter clause that goes back to a defunct corporation, so we're trying to figure out what to do with that, too.
It's complicated, huh?
Yeah. So we know where we are, and so we need to lean on you folks to give us some direction on where do we go from here, today, tomorrow, and six months from now.
Supporting what Frank suggested on an interim basis so that we can, I know, Frank, you pretty well summarized what we...
Yeah, I can, I can readdress...
Before we get to that, let me, let me just bring out, we still have debt, don't we, on Savannas?
The debt that currently exists was a general fund payment by a loan to the solid waste department, so it's actually not through that anymore.
It's being paid.
Yeah, that, and that is being handled.
Through general fund.
Yeah. I think there's two or three years left to payments for that. But that's a general fund payment, it's already incorporated. It really isn't impacted, that part is not impacted by this. Okay.
Frank, we may want to send the commissioners a copy of that 2015 PowerPoint, which kind of summarizes where we were before we went back out, and it will give you a lot of history about ownership, deed restrictions, et cetera, especially for those of you that weren't on the board at that time.
That's a good idea.
How long was the management RFP process? Is that something that we can handle within six months?
We're very hopeful to get it done, and that's why we wanted to act very quickly because the hype season starts in January, and you really want to be done with this and get them on board because they want to be here when the revenue is at the highest, and that would be in January. That's why we were immediately, you know, it happened this morning, and we're here this afternoon because that's the quickest we can get it in front of the board to give us some direction to try to move forward. The other part is, of course, you know, July 30th, as you would have read in the letter, it's, that's the last that they will perform unless earlier, meaning that they're not staying any longer. That's the furthest point in time that we could expect they would say. So we obviously want to start talking immediately with what we could do, once again, on an emergency interim basis so we can just continue providing an adequate level of service, an appropriate level of service for, you know, the people who are enjoying the golf courses currently.
So we need, we need you folks to come back to us as quickly as possible and give us some interim...
And I've done that, if you'd like, I can repeat it, but that'd be good?
Yeah.
All right. It's request one to the board to direct staff to immediately begin negotiating and enter into a temporary management agreement with either Cypress Management, Cypress Golf Management, who's been maintaining and operating the golf course for the last 30 to 45 days. Of course, we would do due diligence with them before we would enter into any agreement, and also ask for International Golf Management as a simultaneous option so we can explore both. And they did the maintenance for the last 20 years. As a matter of fact, they were, they also have a management component to that company. So we believe those are two good ones for us to explore simultaneously. And then obviously, as the county attorney has indicated, because of the potential of a bankruptcy and how that could stay proceedings, we wanted to move as expeditiously as reasonably possible to get this done before there's a stay that puts us in a position that might be more difficult for us to move forward on. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, Scott?
Yeah, if it gets into bankruptcy, you've got to go through the bankruptcy court to get things resolved, and it takes time. So if we can do this now and get your, get authority to have you sign the management agreements for six months, whatever it's going to be, will be good.
Sure.
And we would do that for a not-to-exceed period of six months if that would be in the board's interest, and we will, we can bring an RFP back to the board. We have enough time to do that, so you can look at it before we decide to send it out because the board may want to look at different options depending on, you know, what's going on with each course, if that may be something that would meet your need better, meet your needs better.
Pleasure, the board.
I don't think we have much choice.
I second it.
I guess I made a motion. A motion to accept, go out for immediate negotiations with IGN and...
Sacrosolf. Thank you.
And I would like to see beyond that what our options are going forward.
Yeah, and so before we do anything with an RFP, we'll bring it back to the board.
This also gives an opportunity for whoever company we go with, they could just negotiate with the leaseholder on the carts and everything else directly. Otherwise, they're going to lose a lot. We might have...
That's exactly part of what the dialogue we had a little earlier was, yes.
And this is, motion includes the authority of the chairman to sign the agreement, right?
Well, make the chairman sign it.
Okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. Anything further?
Well, you voted on that, right?
Well, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 4-0.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have one public comment, Pamela Sal.
I want to clarify that $700,000.
Yeah, yeah, that would include, obviously, for us to pay. That doesn't include the motion, too.
That's included, the $700,000.
The $700,000, thank you.
Mr. Sal, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm Pamela Sal Vieira. I initially was just going to comment on the health insurance presentation. It was superior. I think that these are the best agenda packet work papers I've ever seen on an item, and I really appreciate that. I hope that we, as a county, honor our commitment to our employees, and I understand that a lot of the way we can retain employees is through the health plan, so I commend you on that. But I have a lot to say about the golf course. I happen to be in the audience the day that this was decided by the board to put out to contract as a service. I agree with you, Commissioner Pritchett, we shouldn't be in the golf course business if at all possible. But I wasn't going to say anything. I was fairly neutral on this issue and observing it when this went to contract until I kept hearing the people in the audience. And I would recommend that this board and county management talk to the people, at least, who commented that day, to get direction on which way to head. I don't see, first philosophically, how adding a middleman gives the taxpayer any more value, and that's what you do when you put it out to contract. You either forego a missed opportunity in savings to that person and give it to someone else, or you give it to an undeserving entity and not the taxpayer who's funding it. But what had sounded me that day, and what is so overwhelming in my mind right now, is as I sat there that day, they were having the same complaints that the volunteers were having about the animal shelter. Now, my, I was very involved with the animal shelter at that time, and my assessment was it was intentionally mismanaged. And they were making, right down to the sign, that was the point when I decided to get up and make a comment the day. It was right down to the sign. You had golf volunteers complaining that, of course, you weren't getting business because they wouldn't even put a sign up to say the golf course is down here. We had that same exact situation at the shelter. So I would recommend, first of all, I'm not a big fan of contracting and what they call privatizing because there's just too much room for, especially without independent oversight, because you don't know about the arrangements that are hidden and what could be harmful to taxpayers. So I would recommend contacting the, at the very least, people on the agenda that day who were volunteers and participating because I bet you they've stayed somewhat involved. I heard you say that the volunteers have dropped off after initially that some people were complaining. So I, I'm not that active in the animal shelter right now, and a lot of it had to do with the ordeal of handing the contract out to it. So I'm not surprised, I'm disappointed that we're having to go through this, but this is what you get when you contract out. Thanks.
Maybe we should get the sheriff to run the golf courses.
Well, I'm sorry, I have to respond to that. I don't know if you saw it, but it was in the paper that they did not answer calls and two dogs starved. Several, over a period of months, they were contacted, which makes me wonder how this board's overseeing that contract. I'm sorry you brought that up.
Thank you, Mrs. Sal. Any other business? Any other comments from the board? Okay, this meeting is adjourned.
We should have accepted your motion first, first one before we get to golf.
How?
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.